I'd like to call this regular Board of Education meeting of the West Dallas West Mawkeye School District to order. We'll do the stand for the pledge, and Ms. Klug, would you please lead us tonight?
Certainly.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you very much. Ms. Zette Coe, please do the roll.
Ms. Klug?
Here.
Mr. Schultz is excused. Mr. Bailey?
Present.
Mr. Lee?
Here.
Mr. Eustreck?
Here.
Mrs. Justum?
Here.
Mr. Sickich?
Present.
Mr. Keller?
Here.
President Emmett.
Here. Proper notice of this meeting has been posted in accordance with the open meeting laws of the state of Wisconsin. Do we have any modifications or additions to tonight's agenda? Tonight, the role of Superintendent Lexman will be played by Beth Kahler. As you've all noticed, that Ms. Kahler is sitting here tonight, so she will be doing the superintendent's report later this evening. Public comments. I have one listed. Donna Jonison. When you come up, please give us your name and address for the record, and remember you have about three minutes to address the group, so thank you.
Okay. My name is Donna Jonason. I live at nineteen forty-five South Eighty-third Street. My kids all went through Franklin Elementary and Frank Lloyd Wright and Central High School. Anyways, and in case there are some new members here, just a reminder that the Hope Closet is a partnership between Mount Hope Lutheran Church and the school district to serve families who are in transition or homeless. We receive referrals directly from the social workers and counselors at each school, and then families are invited to come and receive new clothing four times a year, and they can get food from our food pantry every single month. So I just wanted to give you a quick update. We've been in existence now for two years. This fall, we gave out a hundred and fifty-five backpacks full of school supplies. That's up from ninety-five last year, so about half, fifty percent more. Lots and lots of new clothing has gone out. In one month, we gave out, for example, over seven hundred shirts alone. We have served the most clients ever in the month of August, fifty-five families for a total of two hundred and seventy-two people. And remember, we serve the entire family, so infants through adults and anyone who's living in the household, grandma, grandpa, boyfriend, whoever. And we do not let go of families until they're on their feet. So we now have some of our clients who have been with us for about two years, who have been homeless off and on and have not been able to quite get back on their feet yet. And we have had five families return to us this fall who were gone for about a year and now are experiencing trouble again. But they have my number, so they know how to get hold of me. We're rising to the challenge. We've expanded at the church. We now take up one large room and three smaller rooms in the educational unit of Mount Hope. And we started in one very small room, so it's really grown a lot. We are constantly seeking financial support. I'm happy to say that a lot of our financial support comes from various organizations in the community, as well as from the Mount Hope Lutheran budget. We also are proud to say that more than half of our volunteers now are not members of our church. It's getting around by word of mouth, that many people are coming in and volunteering just from hearing about it. So financially, we wrote a grant through the ELCA, which is our governing church body. It would be for ten thousand dollars a year for three years if we get it, so we're keeping our fingers crossed. We won't know about that until sometime in December. In the meantime, we continue to do fundraising, so I am dropping off some flyers with you all tonight. We're having a big deal burger fundraiser where a portion of our proceeds goes to the Hope Closet, and we also have a big fashion and craft festival at the end of October. So, anybody have any questions? We're excited. We really appreciate the support. I'm in contact with Nick a lot, Nick Burr, and it's been an awesome communication system. I think it's really one of the, I don't know any other place that has a partnership like this between a school and a church. And I think it's awesome when resources can combine like this to make a difference. And if you could be there, and please feel free to visit anytime, you would just love to see the looks on the faces of people when they come in to receive things from us. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much for...
Sure.
Thank you, Donna.
That was the only public comment that we had noted. Is there anybody else in the audience that wish to address the board? All right. If not, then we will go on to the superintendent's report. Ms. Kahler?
So this week, we found that we have received the American Heart Association recognizing the West Dallas West Mawkeye School District for a Workplace Health Achievement, which is the Silver Designation. And tonight, we welcome Lisa Schweitzer, the Youth Market Director from the American Heart Association, who will present our team consisting of Nicole Weeks, Janet Delicate, and Mary Capel, representing the district with this special award. Please join me in welcoming her.
Well, thank you for having me. My name is Lisa Schweitzer. I'm the Youth Market Director for the American Heart Association, and I've been working with your schools for about fifteen years now. Typically, I work with the PE teachers at your schools, and I have to tell you, I'm always just so impressed with how professional they are and how willing they are to help the American Heart Association. I know Jeff has, eons ago, we worked together, but yeah, so it's just been a pleasure to work with them on our Jump Road for Heart and our Hoop for Heart events. And this year marks the fortieth birthday of what we now call Kids' Heart Challenge and our fortieth year of partnering with schools. So not only this year will we be promoting the physical well-being of your students, but we've also moved over to the social and the emotional side. So we have new messaging where kids are being taught to be kind and to be themselves, and that's huge for our programming this year. They'll be challenged to get in sixty minutes of activity a day. They'll be challenged to drink more water, and then to do one good deed a day. So, one thing I like to mention is we now do kickoffs at schools, and nationally, we modeled our kickoff last year after Pershing Elementary. When I was at the school, instead of the kids clapping, I saw they would snap or they would do just some fun things. And so we incorporated that into our kickoffs nationally, so I think you guys should be proud that you, you know, modeled that event for us. Last year, eight of your schools participated in our events, which led to three hundred and forty-eight students who took our Healthy Pledge. They go online. They say, "I pledge to do the three things that I mentioned before." Your schools earned about fifteen hundred dollars in U.S. Games certificates so that the schools could purchase new PE and playground equipment, and they raised almost twenty-four thousand dollars total for the American Heart Association to help fight heart disease and stroke. And although your PE teachers aren't here today, I ask, should you run into them, that you please thank them and commend them for their efforts. Lisa Larson, she actually had over two-thirds of your students register and take that challenge, so very proud of her efforts. Shannon Danhoff, Terry Lubinski, Allison Cardwell, Erin Barthouli, and Annette Morowski are also all key players in the donations that were raised. And without their assistance, we wouldn't have programs like Workplace Health Solutions. So all of that money that's being raised, we're able to provide programs like that to employers and to businesses. Eighty-six cents of every dollar's raised goes right back into the community to fund research or education. So thanks to district leadership for setting a vision for wellness and to all of your staff for embracing that vision. I am proud to present the Silver Workplace Health Solution Award to the district. You were one of thirty Wisconsin employers, including four school districts, that received this recognition. So that's pretty impressive. In fact, your district actually increased two recognition levels from last year, so that's huge. A lot of companies don't do that. Janet Delicate, Mary Capel, and Nicole Weeks, I want to personally thank you guys for coordinating the process and working so hard to earn this recognition. So thank you. And this... is...
Very nice.
We look forward to hearing, you know, more and more and having other districts model what you're doing. You guys are definitely making a difference, so thank you.
Thank you for that. And tonight really begins one of the most exciting things I think we do at our school meetings, and that is hear from our high school representatives. So a warm welcome to our representatives from West Dallas Central High School. We ask that you introduce yourselves as you begin your presentation. Thanks for being here.
Hello, everyone. My name is Enwell.
And I'm Tori, and we're both seniors at West Dallas Central. We are here to share a few of the many great things happening at our school. The 2018-2019 school year opened a few weeks ago, with central staff and students excited to start. Many teachers began their courses with team-building challenges and get-to-know-you activities so that a true classroom community could be established from day one. Over the last few weeks, many other events have taken place to kick off the school year on a high note.
On Wednesday, August twenty-ninth, the West Dallas Central staff welcomed the class of 2022. Our freshmen started their morning by receiving their schedules from their new counselors. They then heard a short welcome presentation from Mr. Taylor and the administrative team. After the presentation closed, the students had their opportunity to walk around their school, walk through their schedules so that they could learn where their classes were and feel feel how it's like to have a four-minute passing period and briefly meet their new teachers. The day did not end there, though. After eighth hour, the students started a scavenger hunt bingo where they had to explore the building. Any students that finished their bingo card in the thirty-minute period was given central gear. Their day closed with lunch with the entire West Dallas Central staff. A shout-out needs to be given to the members of student council for their participation in the orientation, as well as the staff members who helped design posters that can be found throughout the building.
PBIS kickoff. Throughout the week of September tenth, student leaders spoke to each grade-level class to share their ideas on what it means to be a Bulldog here at West Dallas Central High School via our PBIS kickoff. The presenters reminded the students of our school-wide expectations and highlighted some upcoming events to be excited for. These individuals did an awesome job reminding our students to be responsible, engage leaders in our WAC community, and gave them ideas on how to make Central a great place to learn.
For the second year in a row, senior Alexia Rodriguez organized a September eleventh memorial with almost three thousand flags that represented the lives lost from the attack that took place in our country. Alexia and a number of other students, with assistance from Mr. Hernandez, set up the display before school, getting here at six-thirty to do so. The social studies department then took time out of their busy days to bring students down to see the powerful display.
Avid Information. Avid, which stands for Advancement Through Individual Determination, has a mission to close the achievement gap by preparing all students for college readiness and success in a global society through various school-wide academic and instructional trainings and supports. Besides the school-wide instructional strategies, there is also an Avid Elective course at each grade level. The majority of Avid elective students are the first in their families to attend college and represent groups traditionally underrepresented in higher education. The Avid elective provides academic, social, and emotional support that will help them succeed in our school's most rigorous coursework. It also helps students, as they prepare for the ACT, explore careers, apply to college, and succeed. For the first time, Avid Nine began at the start of the school year. To get them to know the school, Avid Nine students went around the school in small groups on a little tour. They stopped in the office, different classrooms, and the WAC CreateSpace studio to meet with teachers, administrators, and staff members. Their purpose was to ask the staff members at the spot a question, for instance, "Why did you become a teacher?" And then take a selfie with that person. It was a fun way to help the Avid Nine students get to know the staff and their future teachers in the school in an interactive way.
Bulldog Athletics is off to a good start for the 2018-through-19 school year. Our students are participating in girls swim, girls tennis, boys and girls cross-country, boys soccer, and boys and girls volleyball. And now we want to give you a few ways to keep in the loop with what's going on at Central.
Bulldog Radio. Have you heard? West Dallas Central has a student-run high school radio station. They play a format called AAA. Think Dave Matthews, Adele, Beatles, Zeppelin, Foo Fighters, et cetera. Central students are back on the air now that school is in, so pull up WAWMSDradio.com and give a listen. We also have our own free streaming app for your mobile device. Just search WAWSD in the App Store. Thanks to Mr. Lex for starting and maintaining this phenomenal opportunity for our students in all our ears.
The Bulldogs news team was back on the set this week producing the video announcements for the WAC community. The news team meets daily at seven fifteen a.m. to film the announcements that are shown during homeroom. Subscribe to the WAC CreateSpace YouTube channel to get your daily news update.
Do you have a Twitter account? Follow @WACBulldogsforAthleticNews and @WACWestDallasCentralHighSchool for school updates, or use the hashtag #BulldogOn and hashtag #WeAreBulldogs to stay up to date on what's happening at Central.
This year, we have continued the tradition of celebrating the many things that make Central great through our weekly celebrations, email, and blog. Through it, we will highlight classroom activities, extracurricular or school-wide events, athletics, and the like that shows students and staff being engaged leaders in our community. This year, parents will also receive these weekly updates. Look for Central Celebration in your email Friday afternoon. Upcoming events. Finally, we would like to share some information about Central's upcoming events.
Homecoming. October first through fifth is Homecoming Week, and our student body is already excited. This year, we will be celebrating the week with some fun dress-up days, including Mean Day, Hawaiian Day, and Throwback Thursday. In addition, Powder Puff will return this year with games happening after school on Wednesday, October third. The finals to determine the Powder Puff champs will happen before the big homecoming football game at the Athletic Complex. The Homecoming Pop Valley will take place in the afternoon on Friday and will include Central's traditional traditions like the egg toss and tug-of-war. The afternoon will continue with the parade that starts at Irving Elementary and leads to the West Dallas Athletic Complex, where Central will be taking on New Berlin West at seven p.m. Come cheer our Bulldogs on. The week will conclude with a homecoming dance on Saturday night in Central's EH Steck Fieldhouse.
And that's it.
Wow. Pretty good purse update, guys.
Yes, very good. I told you. Take a deep breath, you'd be fine.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thanks for sharing. I know you guys are welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting or go home and do homework, so whichever you prefer, you're more than welcome.
I finished mine.
But we look forward to having you here the rest of the school year, so thank you.
Thank you.
And at this time, we're going to welcome Dr. Jessica Mo, representing Longfellow Elementary School, and her staff, who will be presenting their school showcase.
Hi, everybody. I just want to introduce, lucky for us, we have one of the gym teachers here. That was reference, that was not planned. It was not a plant. That was just really good luck on that part. But Becca Schwal is our deeper learning coach and also does math intervention for us. Ellie Cardwell is here. She is our FIAD teacher. We share her with Wilson School, but she has been consistently at Longfellow since I've been there, doing lots of cool stuff, always getting grants. We are glad to have Ellie. Next to her is Michelle Match. She has a first and second grade combo class this year. Fifth year? Sixth? Six? Seven? I had her my first year at Longfellow, so she has been with us a long time. Kathy Boyd and Ann Guerencer are in front of them. They are our veterans. That's the politically correct grade. They are our veteran teachers. And you'll see in our presentation, they, single-handedly, were a very big part of our improvement on Forward Exam. They kind of took that over, set the tone, did all our test prep, so we'll be talking about that, so I'm glad they're here. Just making sure it was on the other side of the pole, if that would have been. So I have been told very strict fifteen minutes, very strict fifteen minutes. So there are some slides that I'm going to go over quickly, but you have copies, especially those where you have to read comments and whatnot. I'm not going to read to you, but please go back. Kind of the idea of it is to recognize mostly our teachers, and there's lots of good feedback in there from other places about the teachers at Longfellow, so I don't want you to miss that. SIP goals. We are proud to say, every year, our college and career ready, so CCR is that sixty-first percentile on MAPS that we're all going for, eighty percent of kids at the sixty-first by the year 2020. So next year, we are moving into getting sixty percent of kids there. Just going to tell you that we started at a baseline in the thirties. So in three years, we've gone from thirty percent of kids college and career-ready, right above that sixty-first percentile, up now our goal is to be at sixty. So we're going to continue our work with UDL. We've done lots of system-wide shifts that we'll talk about later. That, quite frankly, I always use the term, "we're going to be a homerun or a strikeout," you know? Like, either it's going to go really well and it's going to all mesh, and it didn't. I think today, I'm pretty sure that we're looking more towards a homerun. The kind of our shifts have been going really well, so we'll talk more about that. Expanding student-centered coaching, working with the ICS Equity Modules, and embedding deeper learning. So that's kind of our work in a very quick nutshell this year. Some celebrations. I said this is probably the best showcase we've ever done because, you know, everyone can sit up here and talk about and paint a pretty picture of their school. And I know that I'm pretty biased, but when you have the data to back it up, it makes that picture even prettier. So, like I said, for MAPS growth, 2016, that's when we kind of started the strategic plan. That's when we started this, five years. We've gone from thirty-three point six to forty-four point nine to fifty-one point five percent of kids that have moved into that sixty-first percentile. What's even better than that, that we track but isn't necessarily what the district tracks, is the amount of kids we have that are at grade level. So kind of the other marker is that fiftieth percentile, meaning that the kids are falling in that traditional bell curve distribution of scores. We push seventy percent, eighty percent of our kids that make that fiftieth percentile in a lot of grades. So that means despite demographic things that people might say would cause our kids not to do as well, they are doing as well as any kid in the country. So that is kind of proud for us to prove to people, too, that there's really not a reason that those kids can achieve at the same high levels as any other kid, and they're definitely showing that. And reading again, starting out in the thirties, and we are in the fifty percent of kids, we're at the sixty-first. So we're looking to move both of those about ten more percentage points for next year. Even the bigger, exciting thing is Forward Exam. So we went from twenty-seven percent of our kids that were proficient and advanced in math last year to forty-six percent, which is a really huge jump. And like I said, these two ladies, not the teachers too, I'm not, but they really had kind of the perfect formula for getting results out of their kids, and we had them spread that to other classrooms and help other teachers do test prep and kind of really making kids think that they can. Some of it is a mindset, not feeling defeated, and whatever magical powers they have, we call them the Forward Exam Whisperer, so that they can put that seasoning and that formula together in a right way to get the most mileage out of kids. It's not a kid's favorite thing to do a standardized test, so figuring out what is that concoction to get that. In English language arts, we also had growth, not quite as much as math, but we went from thirty-five percent to forty percent. So we ended the year super, super happy about our data. You know, you have all that anecdotal feel-good stuff that you know you're doing the right work, but it helps you kind of keep the momentum and energy. We kind of worked slow to build the foundation through UDL and get our younger grades right so we could reap the benefits in our older grade. That was by design. But it's like a sports team that's in a rebuilding year, right? That's hard when you're in the rebuilding. It's not as rosy until you can kind of get through it and get to the other side. So now these little people that we started with as kindergartners are up in fourth and fifth grade, and, you know, what their basis, their building blocks, what they needed to be successful in the older grades, we seem to have come close to getting that in a better formula, so we are very, very happy about that. UDL, Universal Design for Learning, so we are in the fifth year of a DPI grant. It used to be eight thousand dollars. They just upped it to ten thousand dollars, but it's actually a federal special ed grant. And we've kind of embraced this idea of every kid getting access at tier one. So I think I've said when I've been here before, I used to be really good. Longfellow used to be really good at doing interventions, but all we did was spin our wheels on intervene. So UDL kind of shifts that and said, "You really should be spending your time getting it right at tier one the first time." That's a much more efficient way to move kids than always responding. I don't know if everyone was super happy at first when we got the grant, but I think we're in a place now where it's kind of become the way we do business. You know, it didn't start that way, and we're able to do some creative things. So we've been working on math the last four years. This year, we'll switch to focusing specifically on English Language Arts through UDL. The next size, I just included, we've had visits from districts all over the state, and some of the feedback they've given to our teachers has really been tremendous. I'm not going to read that to you, but, you know, people don't have to give any feedback at all. And to a person, these people have saw me out, like, "You have to tell your teachers this," or "You have to tell." We were absolutely moved. We were absolutely impressed by what we saw. So it helps, I think, validate the teachers' work when it's not just me telling them that or Becca telling them that or each other telling them that, but these people coming from the outside that feel that same way. So we are very, very lucky with that. There's a letter here from a principal in another district. They came back to see us. They're going to come back for their fifth time. So they came once and just keep bringing teams of teachers back.
That's great.
Want to start it at their own school, so those types of things kind of help keep us going. Am I going too fast or am I watching my clock? I have specific instructions. Last time I was here, I talked about the gift market with Ridge Church, some of you. So they might be the most wonderful. They are so giving and have all these people, and some of whom are even parents at our school, which is nice. Part of the mission of their congregation is this community outreach piece. So this year, instead of doing the holiday gift market, we did a Gear Up for School Success. So they raised all the money to make grade-level-specific supply packs. It also took our supply list, bought all the stuff, and also a backpack. And on Forms and Fees Day, parents could pay five dollars for a voucher that would cover a backpack and a fifth-grade pack or a kindergarten pack, whatever it was. Kind of the thing that's a little bit different that has really played well is that they call it hand up versus hand out. So they donate all the money from the vouchers back to the school, but parents feel very empowered to pick their own stuff. They feel very empowered to pay that amount of money. And I was just telling my staff today, I've had three parents now come back after the fact and say, "I owed you this money. I couldn't pay them that day." Bring me cash into the office after the fact. I just sent another parent last week. "I only paid for, you know, two of my kids. I had three. I owe you five dollars," and Mrs. Moll put that in. And they bring it back in and put it, and that is a true story. So it doesn't get much better than that in terms of the feeling that you're looking for and how proud they feel as parents. And I think we ended up with six hundred and eighty-five dollars that they donate directly back to the school. So we don't pay for the supplies, and then we get the money, basically, our parents can then fundraise and also solve the issues of getting school supplies to them. So that is a very cool thing. We had some leftover stuff. At the request of the Ridge Church, we donated to Horsemen in Pershing, so we boxed up supply packs and put them over there. But I cannot say enough, it's changed my whole way of thinking of hand up versus hand out. It's changed parents' whole way of feeling, and nobody gets held if they can't pay the money. I, you know, it's not like that, but I'm not kidding. I've had parents, three parents now, that came back weeks after that day occurred, making sure they thought that they owed me more or wanted to donate to another student, you know? "Do you have any of those backpacks left? I want to pay five dollars and buy one more." And that's a pretty empowering thing for them to do. Hunger Task Force. That's our other special guest.
I think they need more. It's okay. I'm so sorry.
Emergency.
Yeah. We've all been there.
So some of you know about Breakfast in the Classroom. I'm not sure if you've seen this video, but I've kind of found that I'll scratch your back if you scratch mine with community people works great. So they really wanted to... So they really wanted to expand the breakfast program, so they hired a professional film crew to come and do a promotional video at Longfellow. In return, we got new bins for our classroom stuff, new tables and new, it goes both ways. So it's only just a three-minute little video, but they broadcast this all over. It is Longfellow, it's a professional film crew, and it's awesome, so hold on. I think you can expect any child to be at their best without a good meal. We're foolish to think that public schools are gonna do things right. We have a moral obligation to take care of the whole child. We have seen students come just with more needs and families working harder to make ends meet at home. I know that very frequently, kids would ask us for food. I don't know of a teacher in our building that didn't buy snacks with their own money and keep snacks in classrooms. I think my teachers did a great job kinda filling in the gaps, but the breakfast program has been kind of the main thing. That's changed our trajectory a little bit, making sure all kids start off the day in the right way.
It's great in the morning that the students can come in, they can sit together in the group, enjoy their.
Thank you. Kids would have to come in off the playground.
Their situation is at home, that they are coming in the school, they have some nutrition in their bellies to help fuel their brains the minute that they sit down in the classroom.
Kids would have to come in off the playground to eat their breakfast. Now, to you and I, that probably makes sense, if you need breakfast, come in and get it. But to an eight-year-old, when the weather's nice, that's not always the decision they made.
Traditional breakfast, the kids came in and we served about eighty kids a day. Now we're able to serve about average two hundred kids a day with breakfast in the classroom. The kids come in the door, they go through the lines, and we're back into the kitchen in ten minutes or less. Once you get your routine and you know your base numbers, it's easier than you think.
At first, I got pushback from teachers that it was gonna cut into instructional time. The biggest thing the teachers were worried about was time, and I think really working hard to have a logistically good plan, solve them.
I know when I first initially found out that we're having breakfast in the classroom, I'm embarrassed to say, but my concerns were, oh, milk is gonna spill on the floor, there's gonna be crumbs all over the place. I just feel silly for even having that pop into my mind. I feel that it's improved my classroom attendance. I feel that it's improved my community amongst all of my students, that they can sit together and enjoy that breakfast and fuel their brains and get ready to prepare to learn for the day.
At school, I like to eat breakfast with my friends.
Because I could talk to my friends while me and Becca sit doing my morning work.
It gets my brain ready for the day.
The Chris helps me get better rest.
I like eating breakfast in the classroom.
Breakfast keeps me going to lunch.
I guess quite frankly, I couldn't think of a reason not to. If we could fund it, if we could do it without cutting into instructional time, taking a breakfast is not going to hurt any kid.
If there was any other teacher who was hesitant about having breakfast in the classroom, I would wanna ask you, what is your main concern? Are you concerned about the cleanup? That is not the priority. The priority is seeing these kids come in, being able to have that nutrition, and consistently know that they have an environment in the classroom where they're gonna get breakfast every day. They don't have to worry about that anymore. That barrier is gone, and it's just a wonderful way to start our day in the classroom.
We still do it, we still, people thought we were crazy. In fact, Ann brought it up today at sharing circle. Nobody wanted breakfast in the classroom when I brought that up. But no, we admit that now, we kinda laugh about it, but now it's like we never did have it. You know, as soon as you thought through how you're gonna do it, everybody's just kinda used to it. So it's changed a lot. It's one of those things, I think teachers are buying less with their own money, so it ended up being a better thing for that too. We love it. We also have the attendance grab. So not only do we have the walking school bus, which I know you guys are familiar with, but there's a celebrity in the crowd. She is our Longfellow laundry volunteer. So every Wednesday, we do the laundry of our students who are homeless. So they bring it in bags, we do the laundry during the school day and send it back with them at the end of the day. So the nurses started it, but people like Michelle, that is her, that wasn't even staged either. It's like perfect, but I didn't even set it up like that. She was the person who volunteered and teachers go down on their prep and change the loads and fold it back up and send it home with kids. We actually had two calls already, when is laundry starting? When is laundry starting? So we're starting this week. On Wednesday, they can bring in their clothes. That was a barrier for a lot of people, being very self-conscious about not wanting to come to school if they didn't have clean clothes. So that wipes that out for those families. Kinda I'm gonna have Becca talk about this, but our kinda new mantra for this year, as we change all these systems as tier three is the new tier one. So if you think about tiers for kids, tier one is what everybody gets. Tier three is more intensive intervention, if you think about that old pyramid. Kind of our goal the last five years has been to flatten that pyramid and push as much of that tier three stuff down to tier one, so that everybody gets it. So I'm gonna let Becca talk more about that.
Hi. Some of the things that we've done that you would think, I think when I originally started in the classroom, that were maybe reserved for like one or two students in my class. Now we are, our teachers are embracing on a regular basis to give to all of our students. So examples would be like calming corners in all of our classrooms, all of our specialist classrooms, all of our classroom teachers have calming corners that our kids can use to help regulate themselves when they feel it's necessary. And we teach them strategically, we teach them explicitly on how to use it, so that it's available to them at any point in the day when they feel themselves becoming overwhelmed or for whatever need the child might have. We have school-wide, our teachers are using zones of regulation to help our students learn how they feel and when they might feel themselves getting into a different zone, they're color-coded, and how they might get back into the green zone where they're in the optimal zone for learning. So our teachers use that. Our K four, K five, we do a lot with front loading and our teachers embrace that. It's not something that they are complaining about, or they just do it because they know our kids need it. And I, just from a personal level, find that amazing, that our teachers do that with open arms. This being my second district and my fourth school building that I've worked in, I can say from experience, it's not like that everywhere. And to have a group of teachers who work so well together, who are there for all of our kids all of the time, is a pretty amazing feat. And as Jessica said, our data now shows the results of what that can be when our teachers do that. This year also, we're big into our community circles, so our teachers begin and end their days and at certain points of the day, use those community circles to get to know their students on a personal level through restorative practices. We're also teaching kids how to use their words, we say at elementary level, to solve their problems and to communicate with each other, because for many of our kids, that's new to them.
There's our staff. I cannot say enough, I think I said this last time, I'm sure everybody comes up here and tries to say that their staffs are the best, but ours really is. It could not, it is such a difficult draining. No, we use the example, it was not the best day at Longfellow last week, Friday, it was a busy day. And in the end, there was a group of people that got in the office and we got to laughing about stuff and kinda repairing that and working through it. So you have that other piece too, you have to have that. But it's just gonna be okay and we're gonna come back the next day and figure it out again and just keep at it. So I cannot commend them, they are asked to do things that I don't think any of us, for sure me, were asked, thinking that you were gonna do in college, right? When they tell you, you're gonna be a teacher, that wasn't always what you envisioned. And I think to a person, they have embraced it fully and just come and do it every day without complaint, truly. I would not say that if it wasn't true, they really do, so. Questions?
I don't, I don't have a question, I just have a comment. After the few years that I've been on the board, I've watched your growth. And I've seen all of the challenges that have been put your way and that your staff and your team have been able to abolish it all. And the proof is right here. So thank all of you for your hard work and your dedication as teachers. Thank you.
Great, great job. Two really of my favorite people around are on your staff, and you're one of them, and Ally. And it's really cool to see, you know, just really cool to see embracing what we're trying to do as a district and running with it, so. Thank you, appreciate that.
Can tell you the one thing the Ridge Church said, they pulled me aside afterwards and they said, you know, you have the best group of parents we've ever worked with, right? So the stigma always is those kids are those parents. They were so polite and so wonderful and so engaged with your school. So you know, the more people can spread that message, that it's not always what you think. We're proud to do that, so, thank you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Have a great year.
Are we free to go to like the next?
So we're gonna just move on to the legislative update. And real briefly, as we all know, the political climate is leading to a number of challenges over the next few weeks until we get to November sixth. But most recently was the state of the school district address by Tony Evers, our current Department of Instruction Director. And he is asking for an additional one point four billion in state money over the next two years to fund K-12 education. And this would more than double what the schools got in the two thousand seventeen through two thousand nineteen budget. So you will, but we'll be continuing to report on these developments as we move forward. The next section is our school district recognitions, and we want to just highlight those this evening. Shared Journeys was awarded a fifty-two thousand dollar grant from the state of Wisconsin in the DPI to create that infant lab for children who attend shared journeys. And that's for their children to receive daycare while school is in session. You'll also note that I sent you, but also wanna highlight that there's a wonderful segment from PBIS that aired, excuse me, yeah, PBIS, PBIS, PBS that aired on September twentieth and really highlighted the wonderful things that that program is doing, that was filmed in spring. Central High School had a special education team of teachers from Tavia High School come and observe a social inquiry class. And this is a class that helps students on the autism spectrum regulate social emotional behaviors, so we're proud of that. West Milwaukee Intermediate Schools, Becky Argus, Alex Dollar, and Andrea Barron have been selected to present at the Ninth Annual Personalized Learning Convening at the Wisconsin Center in November. And this presentation will show how they journeyed into personalized project-based learning. Lane Intermediate School was recognized as a HeartSave certified school by the Adam Project that was sponsored by Children's Hospital. Franklin Elementary, excuse me. Yes, but at Franklin Elementary School, we have some donor choose grants. Becky Simonson got furniture to have flexible seating in her classroom. And Kristy Klenowski purchased a book series for every single classroom in the school. Jefferson Elementary teacher Robin Utke got a donor's choose award for a grant that was help posture, enhance our music. So she received sixteen stackable steel risers that are gonna be used when the school has a concert. And you heard earlier from Longfellow Elementary School that they again got their UDL grant for ten thousand dollars for the fifth year in the row. And a fourth grader, Esri, was the top scorer and achieved three thousand, not only at the school, but in the state of Wisconsin on September thirteenth.
Fantastic.
Instructional Services received a twenty-one thousand dollar peer review and mentoring grant, and that's gonna be used to have coaching days with a consultant, Diane Sweeney. Over the summer, Nathan Hale, math and computer science teacher, had a pilot program. Her name is Donna Krasovich, and she helped a group of students who volunteered through the eighth grade, being alerted through eighth grade teachers, to prepare for math courses in the ninth grade. They used Alec, the online program, and they also met face-to-face. And this resulted in three Hale students completing algebra requirements so they could take honors geometry. Nine incoming Central students and two Hale students completed the geometries so they could take advanced algebra with analytical geometry, which also puts them on a path for calculus. And such was the case that a second section of advanced algebra with analytic geometry had to be added at Central. And also noteworthy was that fourteen of these students, two were boys and twelve were girls. So again, getting students on the pathway to advanced math in our high schools. Our wellness team again this evening, we're thankful for their work with the silver level recognition. And we did report earlier that schools were recognized for their RTI work. And we'd already published this list, but the banners and such have been received by the schools that you'll see displayed. And those are the many wonderful things that are happening in our districts, their district this month.
Thank you, thank you very much. A lot of exciting things happening and we're only three weeks into the school year, so imagine what we're gonna be reporting on in the next board meeting. Okay, the next item is the board president's report, so we'll review the board calendar. Today, Monday, September twenty-fourth, the regular Board of Education meeting. And following that, we will have a workshop on safety in our schools. On Monday, October eighth, starting at six o'clock, is a regular Board of Education meeting. And following that will be a workshop board development, which will be a board retreat with Drew Howick of Howick Associates. On Monday, October fifteenth, starting at six o'clock, we have a college and career readiness workshop on guaranteed and viable curriculum. And then on Monday, October twenty-second, at six o'clock, our regular Board of Education meeting, including the final budget and tax levy. And then following that will be a workshop of college and career readiness on Alex, which is again, as Beth mentioned earlier, is the math programs that we use in the schools. Any board members have any additional comments or events? All right. Then we will move on to item nine, the consent agenda. Item nine point one, the approval of minutes from the September tenth, twenty eighteen, regular Board of Education meeting and the September seventeenth, twenty eighteen, Special Board of Education meeting. Item nine point two, the employment summary. Item nine point three, supplementary contracts. And item nine point four, the financial summary. Does anyone need any of those items removed for consideration? No, if not, we'll be looking for a motion.
Don't move.
Second.
So moved and seconded, any additional comments or questions? If not, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, that was passed. Item ten, any additional suggestions for future agenda items that haven't been previously discussed or updated? Noah?
I emailed something earlier today, I don't know if you saw, but we'll leave, we'll let it sit for now.
Okay. Oh, that's right.
All right. I'm pleased to announce that Mrs. Caitlin Windler is here with us tonight. She's being recommended to the Board of Education for the position of Director of Finance and Operations. She comes from us from the Greendale School District and has experience in accounting and finance, school operations, expertise in Skyward. She exemplled a deep commitment to working collaboratively, being an organized system thinker, and being dedicated to establishing and maintaining positive relationships as she moves forward to working with us in the West Dallas School District. So we'd like to bring her forward to you this evening.
Karen. I just wanna first and foremost say thanks to the team that interviewed me, both teams, and the board for having me. I am incredibly honored to start this position and I am eager to put my skills and expertise and passions to work in the West Dallas, West Milwaukee School District. I'm gonna give you a little brief background on myself. I grew up in South Milwaukee and went through the South Milwaukee School District. I currently live in Sherwood with my husband and my poodle, Murphy. I started my career with an elementary ed degree in working in the business office of a charter school, the Milwaukee Academy of Science. I was there for three years and I moved to the Greendale School District after that third year as the accountant in the Greendale School District. After that first year, my finance manager left and I was promoted into the finance manager position, which is where I currently am. So I feel I've gotten a lot of great background information in all the processes of the business office. And while I was at the Milwaukee Academy of Science, I also went back to school and got my graduate degree in school business management. So I found this to be my true passion that I'd never knew even existed when I was getting my undergrad. And I'm really excited to start. I started on November first. I also have some connections to the West Dallas, West Milwaukee area. My in-laws went through the West Dallas, West Milwaukee School District and many of them still live in West Dallas right now. And I also worked for Cream Puffs for ten years, so. So I'm excited to start. Thank you. Thank you.
Welcome, we're happy. All right, um, that concludes the scheduled part of the meeting this evening. We will take a quick five-minute recess to take down the cameras and get ready for our workshop, Safety in Our Schools.